Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Escondido Library Board of Trustees meeting to order. All members are present with the exception of Mr. Lorni, who is not here at this time. Is there anyone that has oral communications to any item that's not on the agenda? You were all set to the minutes of our July 25 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Otherwise, we need a motion. On my screens. That is our screens are on. How do we do that? Oh. It's... Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Swab and a second by Clements. All those in favor?
Motion approved 4-0.
Current business identify new strategic plan priorities to focus on for September, October, and November. This was the direction that we pretty much gave to our librarian. And we have been focusing on some other items, and so now it's time for us to come up with some new items to focus on.
I have one I'd like to suggest.
Okay.
It's under economic development.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me. Let me give you the words.
I'll find it.
I wrote it down. It's offer workforce readiness and development programs. And the new chair of the Chamber of Commerce is really keen on doing this and is interested in talking to the library staff about what can be done.
I know David and Zara and in July, Zara had a career...
Career fair.
I can't remember the whole title of the career fair. And prior to that, to get people ready for the career fair, they did the resume.
Right.
So just you're looking for something in the same vein to come up in the next quarter?
Well, when I looked at this and I spoke to Matt Pound, he was very enthusiastic about talking to somebody at the library. So I don't know if this is under the previous reign or what, but there's potentially something there.
Okay, sure.
And so I picked the action item of getting... Sent an email to him and Katie so they can start on that.
It would be Katie. It would be Zara.
Okay.
I want to make a suggestion here, John. All of these people work for Derek. So I'd like to suggest that any email that's sent to any employee goes to her, and then she takes care of it. We...I don't think it's proper for us to tell employees what to do. And so in the future, I would like to make that suggestion. Maybe some of the rest of the board doesn't agree with that.
Oh, no, I agree with it 100%. In fact, I've been doing that.
Good.
Yeah.
I just was thinking about that. I remember when I was in that job like her, I liked to have everything run through me. And so is that all right with you doing that? Okay. Well, there's four...
Elmer, do you mind turning on your microphone? I'm so sorry. Thank you so much.
Quite often we have members who have problems and stuff like that. And for a while, it was getting out of hand because sometimes some of our friends would go talk to a staff member and the staff member was kind of on the spot, you know? Do this right away. You know, whatever. But it worked out fine because we then talked to the librarian and said, who do you want us to contact in the library? And we'd sometimes say, well, you can go directly to so-and-so. In other words, didn't have to go to the library. The library hours for things like that or situations like that, go right to them. It would mainly staff.
But I still think it'd be a good idea to at least CC Derek so she's aware of what's going on in your organization. Even if she said, go talk to so-and-so, hadn't talked to so-and-so, she'd like to know what's going on.
Yes.
Would that be a safe assumption?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, do we need to get real and assign something to somebody else?
Right.
Well, I think it's a good protocol. I also think Derek, you know the workload of these people much better than the friends or us or anyone else. And so it's just, I think, good common business sense to go through you, and then you can deal with it the best way you can. Well, John, there were four things that I saw under the item that you're recommending. Support and register with extended programs, invite business community to provide... That's right. The fourth thing. Okay. Offer workshops, readiness, and development programs.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. I'm reading from the action plan. I brought it with me. I have one that I'm interested in. But when I say this, I want you to fit it in when it's appropriate. I don't know if this time right now is appropriate, but service to non-users is a concern of mine. It's not a concern from the point of view that we're not... Guys, we're working with many, many people. But what we found when we did the strategic plan was there was a lot of people in the community that weren't really aware of all the... As hard as you guys work in the marketing, I think it's been fabulous the last six months or a year. But anything we can do to get these non-users into the library, and I know you guys work on that all the time, but that would be something I would be interested in.
That's actually perfect. I mean, because we have news coming up, so that reaches out to a group that... Well, a population that's not mute or, you know, common users, not moms coming in with the kids necessarily. It's more for... How would you describe it again? Is your program more so?
So we're actually not doing that one this year.
Oh, we're not?
No.
Okay, well, we need one soon.
Yeah, we're in the talks for that. It's just with the licensing and all that, there's a lot of lead-in time.
And you could hardly have done that.
Yes, Zara has in contact with a lady who does Halloween monster makeup. So she's going to come in and give those that register for the event little tips on how to do like scarring and blood and actually send them home with little makeup kits they can use, well, home for Halloween. She's hosting that in early October, so people will have enough time to come, learn, and practice for a few weeks before Halloween starts. And that tends to... That's hopefully going to target a wide swath of people, but probably the about 20, 30, 40-year-old demographic that Adult Services has been trying to get with these new and different programming besides like the concerts and the crafts and all that.
Thank you. Another one that I have, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to pick it up, but I think we're all very interested in this one called Support to Build a New Library. And since Joanna's not here, she represents the city, she would probably be the one that would tell us if this is an appropriate time. But I also don't want to let this just drag out without us not keeping this on the front burner, at least from my perspective.
Amen.
I would agree. The most it becomes a topic that Joanna tells us why we can focus on it right now. And we, like we said, it keeps it on the front burner so it hasn't forgotten or given up on us. So I'm happy to put it on.
Okay. Thank you. So that's three that...
Is that...I thought we had four last time.
Oh, did we? Okay. Is there another one that...
Does anyone else have another one that scales up?
Or is there one of the four that you want to keep?
Well, I think since we're going to Polaris, there's one that's Support Staff Competency Through Training and Tools to Better Assist Patrons. So I think if we can focus on getting everybody comfortable with that so that they can help our patrons, I'd like to focus on that.
I really like that. That's a good idea.
Can you read again the titles? Support Staff Competency Through Training and Tools to Better Assist Patrons. Thank you. All right, that's perfect.
That appears to be certainly plenty to deal with. I can see the staff shaking their head. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. Our next item is the Library Director's Report.
All right, I'm going to start off with, we've gone from the past couple meetings not having any customer comments to this week we have eight. And I'm going to draw your focus on six of them are good, talking about above and beyond. One was a patron who wanted to know what happened to our step schools. It was a complaint, and we have since bought new step schools. Don't know why, but we only had two on the first floor, and we were both closing. So we now have them throughout the corridors of the library, and the patron was informed and as of September, he was happily gotten step schools. We did have one complaint, I held up with Francine, who was in the middle of the house. I think it was more of a misunderstanding where a patron had borrowed a phone book, and she asked for it back because of the time. There's a few hours after the time. And he didn't hear the first request, and so we thought he didn't get it working. So that's that. I will pass those around so you can see them in a little bit of view. Okay. Now, other than that, I have a broad library director's report. Dan, who oversees adult literacy and services, and then others a little bit about their department.
Hey, Dan, would you come up? The podium mic is on, so because this is recorded, we need to have you guys be at the mic.
Right about here?
That's about right.
Good deal. So I brought Murna and Evelyn with me. Murna's part of adult literacy and Evelyn is part of youth services. They're kind of like my troops on the grounds. They have a lot more information they can share about the D and E as well. I can give a very good brief overview of what we do. And if you have any questions as I go along, please feel free to interrupt me. I could go on for hours. I don't think we won't be here that long. So a little background on myself. I've been at the Escondido Public Library for about two and a half, almost two, about two and three quarters years. It's been a very wonderful experience. I used to work in youth services way back in the day, and it was kind of fun to come back and be now in charge of that department. It's been great. And the added bonus is I got adult literacy along with it as well. So I always like to say I helped teach literacy from birth until gray or balding and that. So I'll start with youth services. We cover, that's basically birth all the way to about 17, 18. We provide a wide variety of programs for all those ages. We're trying to promote literacy and also programs that are kind of a little bit outside of the traditional library program. I've always been a fan of break, have these story times, but what else can we do? How do we get in those members of the community that don't traditionally come to libraries, that sparks something different? Just to backtrack real fast before I could do a general review, back in May, we did a wonderful T-Rex program, which combined three different elements. It was a etiquette class for boys and girls ages six to 12. It was a tea party, and a T-Rex was in it. So we had the grand tea room from Long Rand come and teach an etiquette class and provide a lesson on how to do a proper tea and all that. We had a teen volunteer dressed up in one of those giant T-Rex outfits showing improper etiquette and how you do not behave at a tea party. And we had Ms. Escondido, pardon, Ms. California Plus, who is a... Beauty queen or... She's really, she's volunteered at many of our events, so she played the princess and helped teach all about this is how you act properly. Oh, bad dice, or that's not what you do. So it was very nice that it was open to both boys and girls, and the parents loved it, the grand tea room loved it. It's one of those combining a lot of different elements, and we're definitely going to be doing it next year. And of course, we have our story times, rhymes, and reading for our preschool prep. We do our toddler tales overseen by Mrs. Garcia, which she also speaks Spanish, so during her story time, she'll work in Spanish and English, and she'll do introductions and both, do different songs. It's fantastic. Evelyn here does our baby story time, and she does... We have little board books that we give the kiddos that they can actually hold and non if they want to because they're made out of cardboard, makes it safe. What else do we have? We have our teen librarian Kathy, who's not with us today, but she's really deep dope into a lot of revitalizing the teen program. She...What I like about her, she gets bored of doing the same old thing over and over again, so she's revitalized with three new programs for the year. She's doing one called Teentastic Fun Time that is kind of, has some fun funky 80s vibes going on with it, where they decorate it. But it's kind of just a hodgepodge of here's a craft, here's some games you can play. And it's seen a very big uptick in the number of teens that actually attend, where she was getting maybe two or three at her craft noon program. She's now getting, I believe, somewhere between eight and 12. And teens speak anything above five is great. Anything above 10 is amazing. So I'm kind of meandering a little bit. We also provide a lot of different resources and outreach to the community as well. Evelyn, could you touch on it a little bit since you're starting to actually do a lot of our scheduling for that?
Hello. My name is Evelyn Crown. I've been with the children's department at the library for 28 years. So I'm very happy to be part of the youth services department. And community services and outreach is a big part of my role in the, as a associate in the department. We have outreach to the various local schools and anywhere else. If there's a, the Caltrans Center, RTAS, the educators site, we are on task to be there and be present, to be there to represent the library, to show what we can showcase to educators throughout the county and what services we offer. So we are wanting to go out into the community, not just bring people in. So it's a great program, and I enjoy doing that. We have a lot of library tours that we've conducted. We did a high volume of tours in May, which is a really big push for the summer reading program. And that brought in tons of outreach, and it was coordinated through the various departments throughout the library. Normally, before, it was just youth services, and so they just saw our faces. Now it's adult services, customer service, staff going into the community together. And so they're seeing all of us out there.
Can you talk a little bit more about the summer reading program and how many participants you had? How many books were read?
Do I have that?
I did not have that.
Dan, you have that.
You have that.
All right. In the monthly report where it's just kind of what went on in the library for us, I believe, did we put that on there? Oh, shoot. Did we? It should be on the library faculty, but...
If it's not there, I can pull it up from my email as well.
You know what? I just realized this wasn't updated. It should have all of that in there, and we have to copy that. Didn't have the numbers yet. I can email that to you as soon as I get back.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
But they were good?
You did. You did see the results from going out into the community, telling the kids about the summer reading program, really pushing that opportunity, and then them coming in and seeing that. So we did have high numbers attending our program.
Do all the schools participate in this program?
We don't track by the school, so it'd be hard to say if they did. But majority, yes. I know we had a high attendance from Reedy Creek because you could see the kids when you were going, talking to families. They had, we'd attended their lunch and learn events, and so we were there focusing on the particular grades, and we would promote it, and then you would see the families coming into the library. So Reedy Creek was, I saw a lot of Reedy Creek, Juniper, Felicita. I mean, especially the local schools, Central definitely is a big impact, but...
Do you...Because each of those schools have a library, so do you work through the librarian?
Yeah, actually, we worked mainly with the library family liaison. And that was a great, we felt, resource because we made connections with them because they're talking with the families, bringing the families together. So we worked better to work that way instead of with the library and, or the library tech because they have so much to do that their focus was just to keep the classes coming in, checking out. But the family liaison was a perfect fit, and also the PTA, which was wonderful. We had great support from them.
Do you have any challenges with kids that, whose command of English isn't where it needs to be?
Not so much. I mean, we have Families for Literacy, so that is a good partnership there for the families who have that English language barrier. But also, when we were going with the children who have that issue, they were coming in and we're just welcoming them. And so we were always teaching them the basics, you know, coming and encouraging. We wanted to focus on avoiding the slide, what they call the so-called summer slide, which is very important. I mean, you have to keep them reading, keep it exciting. And so by having programs, incentives, the books by the friends of the library, that's a real big push because they're picking material that they want, not us giving them something that they have to have, that they get to fill out. So we didn't see that hugely, but if we did, I mean, it works its way, and so you see the benefits more.
Okay, thank you.
That's really critical. We...Elmer was involved too, but we experienced, when we were on traditional school, it was about a six-week reteaching when they started. When we were on year-round school, it was zero reteaching.
I remember.
There were many, there were many things about year-round that were difficult, but for little kids, the fact that you didn't have to reteach really was an advantage.
Right.
To go along with a lot of the other disadvantages, but it really was. So the fact that you're trying to help them through that summer, that would help cut down on the reteaching.
Oh, definitely. We always marketed to the library and the library techs and the family liaisons. Where the schools let off, we...That's our busy time. We don't stop. We focus on what we can provide to keep going.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And I will add for outreach, if we're going to a predominantly Spanish-speaking school or neighborhood, we try to always send staff that is bilingual, or the school will divide that with us as well. So we're getting our messages about it, and we also take advantage of Peach Jar. For those that are aware of Peach Jar is, that is a electronic newsletter that goes to all the families that are in the school district that will advertise what the library's doing. They require that you have it in both English and Spanish, so our word's getting out there. Now, for literacy, we do 18 and up. This is the, you have to be able to speak a little bit of English to understand the material that we are teaching. And it's for those that have moved to the country or those that have not necessarily, when they were going through school, have grasped on reading and the language skills that they needed sort of coming back to us later in life for that. We're also seeing individuals who maybe have unfortunately suffered a brain injury of some kind, and they have to be coached themselves from scratch to get back to where they used to be. Now, to talk about the program, I brought Lorni, who oversees a lot of the day-to-day, and she can give a lot of details about what we're doing, also our Families for Literacy program.
As Dan was saying, we have, oh, my name is Ramon Montano, Escondido Public Library. Been there for, in literacy for 16 years, 2017, September. We have an adult literacy program over the age of 18, not in high school, for people who are... Oops. Reading and writing skills need to be improved. We see them come in at all levels, from the very beginning level to the ready to take that GED test, but it's been a while, and they just need to refresh it and have, get the confidence to actually go through and take the GED test. So up in that, we have, within the program, we have our classes, which we run by semester or trimester, I should say, with our fall semester, our winter-spring semester, and our summer semester, which was our summer reading program. So we also participated. Our families, our, the adults in our program and their, and the families participated in the summer reading program. Of course, we modified us, ours, and with, because we do have a grant and a board that helps also support some of the things that we do that are extra, that does not include it in the grant, we were able to have our own prizes and our own giveaways. This is a great chance because the ones that do have children, their children have their own, we call them bingo cards, and there are things around Escondido that we have them explore, things that they are not normally, maybe drive by there but have never gone in and explored, but the different things that we do have in Escondido. So they had theirs, the parents had theirs. The kids really worked hard, and they were kind of competitive with the parents, of course, because, you know, they wanted more tickets for their chance to win. So it was an amazing program this last summer. So anyways, we have the trimesters and the classes, and that's a little bit more structured because we set the start dates and the end dates and, you know, enroll them in the classes. And then we have our one-on-one tutoring. And our one-on-one tutoring, more for those who need that extra help or can't come in because we have the classes at a certain time, can't make the classes, are either working for different reasons, a different, they need a one-on-one. So we do the one-on-one, and we do the classes. For our families, we got a nice Families for Literacy grant this last year. I'm sure you've heard about it. We're just focusing a lot on STEM, the sciences, technology, and mathematics, arts mathematics. And we're doing a special program for the families, for the kids. They're enjoying it immensely there, the ones that are reminding their mom, you know, it's the Saturday, I know it's the Saturday, I saw on the calendar, we got to be there, you know, at this time and are coming in. Sheila, my coworker, is, she's a, has an elementary school degree, I mean, teaching degree, and she's very animated, and I've had to take her spot a couple of times, maybe once. I keep telling the kids, you get the B team, you'll get A team back again. Because she is very happy, and she keeps those kids on their toes. But the reason they did this, the reason the state library did this is because these are children, our adult learners, that are in this program. So it's kind of breaking that cycle of the literacy, you know, having a hard time with reading and working with the child. Although we're helping them education-wise, we're not actually teaching them to read and write. We kind of give those tools to the parents and show the parents how to read to their child, to, you know, play those games in the car, you know, the ABCs, counting, different things that they're doing. So we teach that. We're demonstrating by the activities that we provide for the children to do, the combine in combination of with their parent so that they're both learning together and having this experience together. So during the summer, when some of the adults that are in our class, are in our classes, heard that they were doing this with the family, they're like, oh, I want to do that. Can I do that? Can I, you know, make this or make that, or, you know, whatever they were doing, whatever project they were working on. So it is, they are fun, and it's something that the whole family can work together. Any questions?
I have some questions. So my first one is, do you see new students every year? And if so, how do we reach out to those folks? Is it like a referral system where some, a current student says, oh, hey, I know other folks who don't, who might benefit from this program?
Well, yes, we do get new people in every month.
Oh, every month?
You know, I mean, not a ton of them, but we get, you know, new people coming in, acquiring a bunch. about the programs, you know, anywhere from, you know, one to ten, you know, you never know. So we do have new students in our program. A lot of times, depending on, try to get them to the classes if we can, can't do the one-on-one tutoring. A lot of our advertising, we have, of course, brochures in the library for those who are outreaching to get new tutors in and also outreaching to get students in, or learners in. And a lot of our learners come to us, a lot of it is word of mouth, you know, which is kind of also, even though we go to the street vendors, we go to the different outreach programs, we go to schools with, you know, partner with childrens, they feel more comfortable when someone else has been through the program and they've gotten, you know, reassurance. Because if you think about it, they're adults and they're learning to read and write, it's real personal and it's really, you know, something that they, you know, depending on whether they're secondhand learners or native English speakers, it can be something real personal. So a lot of that is word of mouth, making sure that they're feeling comfortable, knowing that their privacy is protected, and coming into the program.
Great. And then one other question, you talked about helping folks prepare for the GED. Do you guys have a program specifically designed for the GED? Or is it something like where I would come in and say, oh, I need help with this, will you help me?
Either way.
Okay.
Or both ways. We have students that are actually enrolled at the adult school, taking GED classes, but they're just all on computers, software, and they're still feeling, they're getting the attention and they're just can't pass that math test, can't pass that reading test. And so they feel more comfortable coming to us, getting those questions answered, whether they're in a group setting or whether they're on a one-on-one. When it comes to certain things, they can ask a question or if somebody else asks the question, they get their questions answered. We always, we also purchase study guides for them so that they can also do extra work at home. Because they all get homework, you know, it's not? I tell them, you're going to get homework.
Great, thank you so much.
Dan, what percentage of this program is funded by grants?
It's a hundred percent funded by the state grant. The only people that get paid, not from the grant, are myself and the grant. But all the resources, the technology, Sheila, is all through the state grant.
And so do you apply for that once a year or five years or how does that work?
We've been getting the grant for about thirty-seven years now. So we usually do a, we do an application and a continuing application. Yeah, continuing application. Application which gets us for the next year. And we do reports for them.
Well, this is a lighthouse program. We all have been to your dinner. It is, it is very heartfelt to see the people that are, feel so good about their achievements. And I asked the question about the grants because I do not want to see this go away. And so I'm happy to hear that we have a thirty-year track record and that it's got good funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
You said that, I'm sorry, you said that you guys provide reports as to how it's going to the state?
Yes, it's an annual report and a budget adjustment. So we track where our spending is going for the materials, teaching, classes, things like that. So it's all being allocated.
So kind of like what your curriculum is?
Not kind of, they're still asked for like four juggable things. They don't want us to drill down to like the super mini grade. This is exactly what we're teaching, a more overview of, we taught English and writing, we taught how to read, and these are how the students that participate.
Okay. Can I, can I see the last year's one?
Yep.
Could you send that to me? Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Does anyone else want a copy?
Everyone wants a copy of the numbers.
Sure, if you're, if you're going to get, yeah, sure.
Then can I share one quick story from our literacy program?
Sure.
So during the summer, they get these bingo cards that Marna mentioned. And on these little squares are activities in the community that are, the learners are urged to go out and do. One of the activities was visiting Patty's Playhouse. So one of our learners went over there with her kids and they were, one of the things was to go see a play. And she wanted to have four tickets to go see this play and she was talking to the nice lady at the box office. I don't know what the exact amount was, but the learner said, I'm sorry, I can't afford that, I've never been to a play, so I can't do that. The lady had heard this, was so generous to give her four tickets for her family to go and see The Wizard of Oz. This was their first experience ever seeing a play. And it's just kind of brings tears to your eyes, it's like, wow, this is something that just because of this one little loss on a square has given this family an opportunity that they've never had and connected to a part of our community many, never could have thought to. So not only are we teaching reading and writing, all that, but we're also teaching community and what's out there in excess of the value of it. That's why I'm so glad it's our, Marna shared this at all.
You back on that? The, one of the reasons that Sheila and Marna created this bingo card to get people to go out into the community is when you're coming here and maybe English isn't your first language and you know a small number of people, you stay in their comfort zone. So they were forcing them to get out of their comfort zone and they started going out and doing some of the activities together as a group, so creating new friends. And it's just a beautiful program on so many levels. The literacy is a very important piece, but it brings so much more into bringing people associated into our population.
It also helps the learners are very competitive with each other.
Any other questions? Thank you all for taking time to.
So we look forward to inviting you to our next commemorative mission.
Dara, you have any other items?
All right, so we now have our new logo we mentioned at our last meeting. It has a long history behind it and a great concept behind it that you might not know if you're looking at it, but I've invited its creator, Nick Davis, to come and give you the background to that. I know some of you have already seen it because this logo was created in, probably around two thousand seventeen. And just kind of got lost in the career. So now everything's.
Sorry, let me just get set up. One second. Sorry, I'm trying to get this split so I actually have my notes written. So this was basically a result of that. I've been at the library for six years last month, and this was actually one of the reasons why I was hired is to rebrand the library. So I'm very excited to finally be sort of setting that into motion publicly. So this is our current logo, which we've had since at least two thousand and four, but probably much earlier. I don't really know where it came from. And just a quick sampling of some of our sort of previous materials before I came on. Not a whole lot of visual consistency or overall brand vision, which I think is typical of a lot of libraries. So just a quick overview, when we're talking about a rebrand, we're talking about an opportunity to change our public perception, a chance to redefine and refocus our mission and values, and it's also a promise to our patrons and users. So you've seen a lot of other libraries in recent years rebrand themselves, including Newark Public and the Library of Congress. So as the result of our mission, vision, and values process, our mission statement is that the Escudero Public Library provides equal access to information and educational experiences that inspire learning and foster participation in a thoughtful and diverse society. Our vision is that the Escudero Public Library is the destination to expand your world to unlimited possibilities. And our values include excellence, inspiration, collaboration, education, community, access, and diversity. So basically, part of my process was taking all this and I highlighted some words and phrases that jumped out at me. This sort of served as a process of my brainstorming for the brand. So things like professional, free and equal access, building partnerships, connections, diversity, innovation, community, curiosity, enrichment, and inspiration. These were some of the themes and concepts that I used to work out the brand. So one of the things that people really focus on when it comes to rebranding is the logo. Although the logo is by no means a total encapsulation of the brand, it's often the most central piece and can serve as the face of the brand. There were a number of conceptual ideas that went into the library's new logo, things like pixels and bits, which represent technology and information provided by the library, bricks and mortar, because the library is a community cornerstone and foundation of free society, books and tablets, which represent our traditional and new services and materials, the color purple, which has a quirky, modern energy and relates to our local history, as well as celebrity, because of course, we are Escudito. It's an inherently difficult task to try to summarize what a library does in a single graphic mark. We do so many things and represent so many different ideas. We serve all people and offer endless things to them. But we still have a unique personality and place in the world because we are the Escudio Public Library. And with the new brand, we'll have a new energy to offer the same great service we always have, in addition to all the unlimited possibilities the future will bring. So like Dara said, a lot of work and a lot of time has gone into the logo. Consistency will be of primary concern in implementing the brand. The new logo will have a few different formats or a variety of applications. In addition to the new logo, a color palette will help further define the brand. Colors like violet, which represents deep and thoughtfulness, a multifaceted tone of balance and wisdom that speaks Escudito history, gold, which represents the highest quality and integrity, loyalty to our values and patrons, green, which represents energetic, funky, vital and modern energy, as well as secondary colors like sky blue, orange, and deep blue. The new brand will be as lively, stimulating, and complex as the library is. Although we'll have a strong eye for brand consistency, our identity will still allow for a sense of fun and flexibility. We can inject visual interest depending on the specific marketing campaign, or depending on the audience we're addressing. Or the ideas we're trying to communicate. There's still much to explore as far as the design and application of the brand, but we have a very solid conceptual basis to work with. The Escudito Public Library rebrand represents a modern cleanliness and simplicity while at the same time containing a fun and quirky sensibility. It will project an image of professionalism while remaining inviting and accessible to all. The rebrand will give us a much-needed opportunity to reintroduce ourselves to the public and community. Our existing audience will appreciate our fresh new look, and it will provide us a great way to approach new people who may not be so familiar with us. And internally, it will give us a new sense of purpose and direction for our marketing efforts and a reinvigorated energy to continue doing the great work we do. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. We really appreciate your presentation.
Sure.
And then the only other thing I have is just to draw your attention to the July highlights, which apparently I have printed the wrong one, and this is something I will work on. Hopefully not continually, I should have it mastered by the fourth time, just not the third. And you'll see it says, this year's challenge solved, question mark, people participating. I will send out the updated version, which will tell you how many children and adults and young adults all participated in the summer reading program this summer.
Okay. Does anyone have any agenda items for Dara for our next meeting on September twelve? If you, oh, go ahead, Dara.
So your Polaris is being implemented this month, right?
Yeah, there'll be an active on August twenty-second and, you know, it's going to go very, very quickly, nobody gets it.
I'm sure you're, oh, yeah, wow. Good. Well, in that case, no. Do you think we could have just an update on how it went and how it's going?
Yeah, I was planning to have Katie come.
Perfect.
Right now, any question I have for Katie, I just put on the list because she's walking around and I don't want her to combust in any sort of way.
Understand.
Post-August twenty-fifth, I don't have a lot of much reference, but she can tell me September thirty, I have her on that wire.
Great, thank you.
Ron, I have just some thoughts. We have, for a long time, we've had support groups. Foundation is one, it's been around a long time. It's a group of people who serve the community and serve the library in sports services in many ways. We have friends at the library, we have others, of course, Pioneer Room and so forth. I wonder if at some time, we have on the agenda, kind of a review of these, or individual organization, not the whole of them at once, but to have, for example, the Foundation, what is their role, function, what have they been doing, what do they look to see? Friends of libraries and then large groups, there are different groups that support the activities of the library. And I think perhaps maybe we know that they're there, but we're not always sure what has been going on recently. So I think that might be helpful. So I think that might be helpful, of, not all at one time, you know, periodically have a presentation.
Dara, would you feel comfortable if we, I think one, one at a time is much better. And so maybe, uh, just in, inviting one each time, not that we have to have one every time, but when it's convenient for them.
Definitely, I would like in September to, um, I'm planning for Katie to talk about updates and how the ILS implementation's gone. Um, and also perhaps someone come from the Pioneer Room, but that is definitely something where I can talk to each of whoever, whether it's the president of that particular organization or that particular friend group or who might want to be the speaker depending, and have a representative come and talk.
Elmer, I think that's a great idea.
I would suggest, maybe this would have in mind, not only, obviously, to have a person representing their organization, but perhaps the library and, uh, present how that impacts the library, uh, that support and, you know, what's the significance of having that with regard to the library's goal is.
Okay.
Yeah, that would definitely be wise to include because I don't think, much like you don't realize until everyone comes and talks all the things that they do in their departments, uh, the friend groups are instrumental in making a lot of programming happen, uh, so that.
I think it's a great idea, and I think also it's a good chance for us to recognize these people and the fact that we really appreciate what they contribute to our library.
Not to put it off too far, but could it be, um, I'm thinking, because there's three major groups, February, March, April, or January, February, March, just because both are volunteer appreciation month, they've been kind of isolated. Is that putting it off too far?
Oh, just, you're really, you know, start with a name, you know?
Okay.
There's no imminent nature or right away, it's just, that's many of our stuff, there's for you and preparation for us.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Mine is comfortable for them also.
Yeah, yeah, wouldn't have to be all, uh, first, uh, first three months next year, maybe, maybe one or two before that, whatever works out.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll talk and see what they're saying.
Yeah, because it'd be, be certainly useful to me because I keep running across things where people are doing stuff with books and kids, and I have no idea if they've entered, ever interfaced with, uh, or are, I think, looked linked in with what the library is doing.
Okay.
If, uh, if you don't have an agenda item now, according to our protocol, we have a meeting on the twelfth, so September twenty-ninth would be the time to get the.
August twenty.
Uh, I'm sorry, August twenty-ninth, get your, your recommendation to Dara. Sometime, I had a talk with Dara, and sometimes when we change, uh, meeting dates, that throws a little curve at this, but our basic protocol is we do it two weeks ahead of time. That gives her a week to get an agenda, so that the agenda has to come out a week before our meeting. And so, uh, that would be, that's the way we'll, we'll do it. And so if you think of something, uh, sometime between now and the twenty-ninth, just get it to Dara and get it on the agenda.
Okay, just to be clear, so they've got to be in to you by close of business the twenty-ninth?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, and last time, I apologize because I was looking at the calendar and looking at how quickly the next meeting was coming up because of the quick turnaround. I said Monday, not realizing, oh, I'm also supposed to have it to them the week ahead, so, yeah. Just because that was kind of a practice that, um, Joanna recommended and I think is great because it's a lot easier to remember one week before than try and count out those seventeen-two hours and making corrections should there be any hiccups, so, um, that's the rationale.
Yeah, and if we would stop changing the meeting date all the time, that'd help too.
Did we want to put the, uh, the new library on the agenda, or do we want to wait until it's back?
Um, I don't, uh, okay, uh, just, I'm, I'm working on something now, um, where the heck the city is on it.
Yeah, that'd be great to know.
Okay, and, and either I can report, I have no clue, or I can report what I know.
Okay.
Jeff?
I actually have, so in a recent department, department head meeting, uh, this topic was brought up, so I know there's discussion happening amongst the council members on this. So I might, um, if I were, you might want to wait until you hear from Joanna as far as, uh, what her perspective and understanding of that is, because she might have, uh, more information on the topic, just, just add that to the discussion.
Oh, okay, and she's due back when?
She's due back this Monday.
This coming Monday, which is the twenty, huh, the nineteen?
Nineteen.
Ah, yeah, she'll be all cut up there too, right?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, to that, uh, I think that's very appropriate, we bring that on the agenda, the, the library. Uh, what's significant, of course, is that when the past council decided to move ahead and so forth, now there's a bigger council.
Yeah, I just, I just listened or watched that video from, uh, September two thousand sixteen, okay, on how close they were to getting, moving forward. Yeah, so, uh-huh. So, 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 somebody's, uh, Ron, Ron, you hit it on the head, somebody's gonna have to be the irritable conscience to be pushing this, keep it in the forefront.
Well, I think, I think it's one of the board's responsibilities to not let this be swept under the rug. I don't want to push so hard that we get people that are turning against us, but I want to keep it just kind of in the forefront, so that, so that no one forgets it.
So maybe then just a preliminary discussion of where we're at?
Sounds good, and I'll, if, if you want me to, I'll take the lead and put something together. All right.
Yeah, you've already started, and the other thing that'll be good is that it'll be hanging out there as part of the strategic plan for the next three months as well.
Right, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Now there's something else added since two thousand sixteen, whoopie. No, I'm serious, there's another big player. Oh, yeah, talk about him yesterday.
Okay, are there any other items that any board member wants to break forward?
I, I just have one more, I'm sorry. The comic cards, for the folks who are recognized positively, how do you recognize them? On the comic cards?
We have a, um, what's it called? I can't remember, um, it's like a shout-out board, um, where we put them off until I have to turn them in, and then we have other, we can complement each other to a different sort of card. Especially, you know, the board, yesterday we had somebody that we had to have us sort it out because they had, um, over served loose handles. So the, those sorts of things happen, um, so, you know, definitely a shout-outs due to Chris for taking care of that, extra devil is on the desk. One thing I, I remember from a past job that we used to do when we had something like that come off, we had a big pirate chest and we would actually throw some fun little prizes in there. I thought that, I, I thought that that might be something you bring back because our, especially our adult services staff and, uh, circus staff that's on the front lines, they, they get some unique situations and they're always so gracious and still caring toward all of our patrons, even the ones that may be less appreciative. For instance, one about Grand State, Grand State complaint, she knows her own fault. He was just mad at Jay for his grown-up back, um, even though his time was up. But, um, so, you know, they look at her, um, more than just a compliment, but, um, they do the job.
Ron, just a thought, and I've said it before, but I just can't help saying it again, the appreciable difference, positive difference of the Rangers. I mean, it's visible now, and, and when situations occur and sometimes they do, it's handled very well, very, and so forth. I think that's such a tremendous improvement, it's not, it's not just one or two times, it happens all the time, things are hooked back and out.
Well, you know, Elmer, we, uh, we were hit at almost every Rotary meeting with somebody complaining to us about what it was the library looked like and the homeless. I have not had anybody bring that topic up in the last six weeks and I am thankful to Bill Wolf for what he's done.
That was, that was a brilliant move and suggestion, and we had a meeting August first, actually, with Chris and Greg from, um, the Rangers. It just a chance to collaborate on what the expectations were from the librarians and when to kind of have that point of pass-off and also understanding some of their training and, um, when you're writing something down, you, you start it with, I observed. So when a librarian might be looking at a Ranger to write up the, um, incident, it's better if we write it up, if we were the one that observed it. So little things like that that you don't think about, so when the relationship started, it's been great the whole time, but now the war time passes and we're working together and looking, especially that adult services component where they're, you know, maybe answering questions and need to pass off a situation to a Ranger, knowing kind of a system to do that and when they still have to go off the table. Making sure at least from a managerial perspective, we're all on the same page.
Good, any other items? We would need someone to make a motion for adjournment by swap, seconded by Clemens, all in favor, please to vote.
Motion for your.
Three, four, zero.
Thank you all.